Good morning, everyone. I wish to call to order the Monroe County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, November the 15th. I will note for the record that Commissioner Jones and I are present here in the Matt U. Hill Room. Start with our public statement.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. And we're now ready for department updates. We'll start with Ms. Kelly, and then we'll move on to Carlos.
Good morning. Thank you. So COVID cases, hospitalizations, and emergency room visits are all continuing to decrease as of November 8th. Wastewater concentrations have seen a small increase. We will continue to monitor these levels. The FDA has issued a notice that Juana Banana USA is recalling all of their lots of apple cinnamon fruit puree pouches. This is due to reports of elevated levels of lead found in certain batches. The FDA website has more information on all of the lots affected. We do still have COVID vaccines available. Appointments are recommended by calling 812-353-3244.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Mr. Jones?
No.
I will note that people can get more than one vaccine at a given time, right?
Yes, that is correct. So flu and COVID, for example, yes.
Yes. I got flu, COVID, and RSV all in the same day. And my arms were a little tender, but it was fine.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to Mr. Loverteef with our airport. Thank you for coming in person.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I got in the car right away and made it all work. So do I need to sign in here? I can do it when I'm done talking.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to give a quick departmental update for the airport. We just last week went through our annual FAA certification inspection. All 139 airports which receive commercial service have to go through that. And because we receive the 100 or so airline flights a year, we have to live under the same regulation and criteria that, you know, O'Hare does too. So for a small airport like us, it's a little taxing because we have some stringent standards and some extra painting and signs that we have to maintain out there as long as, and the training as well. So I'm really pleased to say that for the first time in a long time here, and it's not a very common occurrence for any airport, but we received a results was the, there were no findings for our airport whatsoever, which for me was a huge accomplishment. In the past five years, we, we and I, the whole team, we put a tremendous effort into kind of revamping our processes and controls, our training. Everything's been revamped, our records keeping. And there was a, you know, a little bit of a cultural change that had to take place. And so there were some growing pains as far as how we documented things and how we conducted our training. So to get our results of no finding was really exciting for us, probably more so than anybody else in the community that really geek out on that. But as part of that, though, I really wanted to make a point to thank the county. And county council enacted this policy earlier this year where they allowed us to, any department, to overlap with, we had an outgoing assistant airport director, and we were given the opportunity to hire the new, onboard the new person with ample opportunity for those to cross-train before the existing departed. So we had about eight weeks of those folks working together. So our outgoing, who had just kind of gotten up to speed and was learning himself because he was, you know, just a couple of years out of college, was able to hand over this training and inspection program to our new fellow. And I firmly believe because of that overlap and the county's foresight that that really kind of helped push us that much closer to the successful outcome. So I really wanted to thank you for the entire county organization for that and for all the support that you kind of, you continue to show the airport with recent equipment acquisitions. We really appreciate it, making life easier for us. And I just want to say thank you and share the good news.
Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just great news. Congratulations. I'm really pleased that it went so well.
Yeah, thank you. Do you want to know what they go over or?
Well, I think it's interesting, too, though, that you're trying to develop the airport as a little bit of a business hub. And when I was out there recently, I saw people getting their haircut at the barber shop and things like that.
Yeah, we're looking at, you know, varied revenue streams. So airports don't necessarily have to rely strictly on aviation to generate revenue. And one of the things that I believe we have a mandate for is to strive for self-sufficiency. The FAA stresses that, you know, aviation should pay for itself. So we strive for that. Of course, we're not there, and very few airports in the world are. But whatever we can do, you know, to help offset our expenses and rely less on the taxpayer dollar, we're all about that. It's good for everybody. So sure, if I have space for a barber shop, a restaurant, or any other kind of development opportunities that makes sense for the community and the airport, we're all about it.
Well, I think, too, that we, you and I were both at a breakfast where we were hearing about development and microeconomics in this area, and Crane is going to be a leader in some of that, we hope. And people coming to and from Crane actually use the local airport. And so you're a critical piece of some of the economic development in this area.
You're dead on. I mean, we're right here in the 69 corridor, and we're the closest airport to Crane that has any kind of, you know, all-weather capability. So you're right. Whenever there's contractors or, you know, government VIPs that come to Crane to do business, they come through Bloomington. And with all of the investment that's going to take in place with, you know, microelectronics and life sciences, we're going to be right in the heart of that, and we're going to be the airport to serve that, this region and that economy.
Excellent. Well, congratulations on the great news.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming in person.
I'll sign in now.
Is there any other department with an update? I see one hand up for panelists. But I can't, I don't know who that is. Oh, it's Ms. Nestor Jellin. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to provide an update on the Monroe County Development Ordinance for the CDO. I just want to make a note, it's been in the newspaper lately, so I just want to provide a little bit more clarification for the public this morning. So the CDO is our zoning subdivision and zoning draft map together. So the last time our ordinance was updated was in 1997. So the county development ordinance is working to update the text and the zoning map together, and that is hopefully ready for public adoption sometime in 2024. So most recently, we put together four CDO listening sessions. These were hosted out in the county areas such as the new Southwest Public Library. We did Ivy Tech, two other locations as well. And so we had an opportunity for the public to come and speak. These were attended, and basically what we're working on right now, Module Two of the CDO, is focusing on the draft zoning map as well as the use table. So we're encouraging people to provide us with any feedback that they have on this Module Two. In an effort to kind of wrap up what we had in August and September from those listening sessions, we've provided the public just with a sort of a date of November 17th to try and get us that feedback, although there'll be a lot of other opportunities moving forward for the public to comment. So this date, November 17th, is just to allow the Plan Commission and planning staff to have a chance to collect and analyze some of the information we're gathering from the public and reincorporate that back into the CDO to keep it moving forward. But as I mentioned, we're still in the drafting process, so it's important for people to get engaged. But by all means, we'll still have future opportunities for engagement. The final portion of the CDO will be happening late this year, probably early next at this point, and that's Module Three. It's going to be, you know, parking standards, landscaping, signage, things like that. And then once all those three modules are put back together, that's when it's going to go to the Plan Commission and the county commissioners ultimately for adoption. And all county landowners will receive mail notice of the date, time, and location of those hearings. And again, will be given the opportunity to speak. So we'll be taking comments all the way up until the formal adoption of the CDO, but we just provided that November 17th date just so that people can provide some feedback that they have as we draft to look at the use table and the zoning map. We've had a lot of good calls with the public this week. So I'll just give us, give you our phone number. It's 812-349-2560. Or our email is planningoffice@co.monroe iron.us. And so if anyone has questions about what their draft zone will be and what's changing for them, we'd be happy to go over that. We have four planners on staff, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and they're happy to walk through any changes with you and answer any of your questions. So let me know if you have any questions, but just wanted to provide that update.
Comments or questions?
No, I don't, but thank you very much for the update. It's important that the public know that their opportunity to respond to this is not going to be over on November 17th.
I think, too, that some of the changes that you're looking at, for example, there's one area that is really a floodplain, and that's not an appropriate place for housing or for even commercial or industrial development in some of those areas. So as we talk about climate change and the fact that we may have more severe weather occurrences, it's important for the public to understand why some of those changes are being recommended at this point.
Yes, good points. And we have over 160 survey responses that we've gotten in so far. So we're looking to get all of the survey responses in and hopefully be able to analyze those. And as I said, the zoning map is still a draft, so we're still working together with the Plan Commission and staff and others to really put our best foot forward, as you mentioned, for the zoning map to, you know, make sure our vision for the county is realized and, you know, prevent against any, you know, climate change impacts that are coming our way. We want to make sure that we have the best document moving forward to protect the public and the environment as well as responsible growth.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Glad to help if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other department with an update? Seeing none, let's go on to public comment. This is for items which are not on our agenda. We ask that anyone who wishes to speak limit their comments to three minutes or less. And if you wish to speak, please state your name and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. And I see that the first person we have who wished to speak virtually is Giulio Alonso of Hoosier Hills Food Bank. Mr. Alonso.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'm Giulio Alonso, Executive Director of Hoosier Hills Food Bank, and I am a proud Monroe County resident as well. Just wanted to quickly check in with you folks and thank you again for your support through the ARPA grant a couple of weeks ago. That's already having an impact for both us and Pantry 279 in getting food out to those in need in our community. But also wanted to let the general public know and thank you again, along with Talisha Kopik from downtown Bloomington, for inviting Hoosier Hills Food Bank to be a part of this year's Canopy of Lights celebration. We will have a food drive tent available at the Canopy of Lights on Friday, November 24th. The event starts at 6:45 on the square. We'll be there to collect non-perishable food donations from the general public as well as any financial donations they may wish to make. And you generously agreed also to extend that food drive through the following Tuesday, which is Giving Tuesday, and our food drive barrels will be available in the Courthouse Rotunda for folks that want to bring a food donation along and aren't able to make it to the canopy or able to bring it to the canopy. So again, this is very exciting for us. It's a great community event. We're proud to be a part of it this year and appreciate that opportunity and look forward to seeing you and members of the public out there and hope that we can raise some food to get out to those in need in our community.
Thank you. I actually wore my Hoosier Hills Food Bank shirt today to remind everyone what's going on and so that I will remember also to tell everyone about the sponsored food drive that we're pushing out. And so this is a time for all of us to be thankful, and I hope that we can share that with other people. Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Jim Shelton. Morning, Jim.
Good morning, commissioners. Jim Shelton, I am a Monroe County resident. Just want to let the public know again that CASA has set their 2024 training schedule. The next training, the winter training, will be February 6th through March 7th. And the office is trying a different schedule in hopes that it'll make training available to more people or at least a different set of people. So instead of the usual evening trainings, they're going to be in the afternoons. I believe this is the first time they've had trainings in the afternoon. It'll be Tuesday and Thursday afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00, again, from February 6th to March 7th. And applications will be due in just about two months, right after the holidays. It'll be January 24th that you would need to get applications in. The training would cover such things as the roles and responsibility of a CASA, child protection law in Indiana, report writing, the way you have to write reports for the courts, and then interactions that you can expect with children and with families and case managers and other professionals that help with the children. So the job of the CASA will be a second set of eyes and ears for the court so that Judge Harvey will know what's going on with the children, how the parents are doing, and can make the best decisions for the child. So I appreciate the opportunity to spread that word, and I hope people will consider becoming a CASA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, let's move on to the next item, which is approval of minutes.
Should I add?
Oh, yes, sorry. We have something else. Yes.
I move to add Item H, a declaration for a burn ban, to our agenda.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have added Item H to our agenda. Now we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Thank you very much.
Move approval of the minutes for November 8th, 2023.
Second. Is there any corrections or additions?
Nope.
I didn't see any either, so call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claim docket, accounts payable November 15th, 2023, and payroll November 17th, 2023.
Second, and we have Mrs. Miller. Good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claim docket for November 15th, 2023 totals $7,380,123.20. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for November 17th, 2023 includes $1,381,705.35 in direct costs, and the remaining $577,641.35 were for indirect costs for a grand total of $1,959,346.70.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
I just want to share with the public that while the amount for the accounts payable is relatively high, a lot of that is transfer taxes that were collected to other entities such as the city of Bloomington, the town of Ellisville, and different government agencies. So is there any public comment on that, these items? Seeing none, call for vote on approval of the claim docket, accounts payable November 15th, 2023, and payroll November 17th, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Note for the record that we have no reports this week, so we will move on to new business.
Move approval of Resolution 2030-30, surplus property.
I think there's a typo. I think that's supposed to be Resolution 2023.
Yes, it should be.
So do you wish to correct your motion?
Yes.
But yeah, it's a typo.
I move approval of Resolution 2023-30, surplus property.
I'll second that. And now we have Mr. Kreider here with us.
Good morning, commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. I want to make sure that there doesn't need to be a second correction made. It shows in the amount line, $2,850. That should be zero. Okay. This request is to approve the surplus of items from multiple departments. The Commissioner's Office, a 2005 Chevrolet Silverado, this vehicle will be auctioned on government, govdeals.com. Court Services, 14 chairs that are in poor condition and will be disposed of as waste. The Highway Department, three Kenworth, three 2003 Kenworth dump trucks. These vehicles will be auctioned on govdeals.com. The Probation Department, two desks that have been replaced with new and will be sold as scrap metal. The Sheriff's Department, wall lockers that have been replaced with new and will be sold as scrap metal, and a camera that has been replaced with new and will be disposed of as waste.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I appreciated seeing the pictures. I mean, some of those chairs were in really sad condition.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on Resolution 2023-30, surplus property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of B&amp;L Sheet Metal Downspout Repair Proposal. Fund name, 2022, the GO bond, fund number 4815, in the amount of $2,850.
I'll second. And again, we have Mr. Kreider.
This request is to approve the proposal submitted by B&amp;L Sheet Metal in the amount of $2,850 to custom fabricate and install steel reducers onto six downspouts on the west side of the showers building. This work is necessary to allow proper drainage from gutter to underground PVC drain pipe. Unfortunately, there are multiple downspouts that are the same diameter where it meets the ground, or the foundation PVC, and that needs to be reduced to funnel that water down. Currently, we have it sealed with a polyurethane silicone, but that's just a temporary fix.
Important for maintaining the foundation and all kinds of other things. So any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Any public comment on this item? I appreciate you looking after the building this way. All those in favor of approving the contract with B&amp;L Sheet Metal for the downspout repair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Mr. Kreider.
All right, thank you.
Next item.
Move approval of Ordinance 2023-46, Building Code Authority Interlocal Agreement.
Second.
This is a continuation of a program we've had since the 90s where the county will perform building code inspections and have the authority associated with that within the city limits. This agreement is, for practical purposes, the same as it has been for, since, for at least a decade. There are some, there are some language changes to how they work with the city that reflects how the work is actually occurring as opposed to, you know, kind of the vague language that was in there before. This is still a one-year agreement. I think the anticipation is maybe next time we look at a longer four- to five-year agreement as that's, that was what it used to be in the 90s. So everything seems to be going well. Our building commissioner has looked at this and was instrumental in those changes, so he's really, he's real comfortable with how it reads now.
Excellent. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, this all makes perfect sense, and I'm glad that our building commissioner has looked over this. So with that, call for a vote on Ordinance 2023-46, Building Code Authority Interlocal Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval to ratify Indiana Recovery Alliance Regarding State Health Grant. Fund name, opioid grant, REF 2023007. Fund number, 9164, in a grant amount of $450.
Okay, I think there's another typo here. This should have been opioid grant, RFF 2023007, and this is not anything that I paid attention to earlier. I'm very sorry. I'll second that. Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and I just want to make sure I heard that the amount was 450,000. I thought I only heard 450. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear in case my, in case my ears were correct. Yeah, we talked about this last week at the work session. This, the state grant is to fund two different things. One is a van, and one is a fan for the Indiana Recovery Alliance, and one is for a building for Indiana Recovery Alliance. There's another project in it that involves the Health Department that does not involve the Indiana Recovery Alliance directly. So this agreement is so that when they, since IRA has entered in an agreement for purchase of a property and that agreement expects closing by the end of the year, that we are ready to do our part through this grant to make sure that they are able to have the money available to purchase that building. And so I believe at last week's, I indicated that I had not heard back from, with the final answer from their attorney, the agreement that we had last week met their approval, so there were no changes made since then or requested. As far as the timeline, we expect to have the Phase Two report for that property by Friday, or on Friday, I should say, and that when I spoke with the IRA attorney yesterday, they indicated that closing will probably be late December, late November, early December.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
I, Vic Foiles, the Executive Director for the Indiana Recovery Alliance, was actually at the county council meeting last night, and he shared with me the fact that the building that they're looking at, that we're having the Phase Two done on, that it won't need a new roof, which is really, really good news for them and will allow them to do more with the money that is being made available. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on ratifying the Indiana Recovery Alliance Agreement Regarding the State Health Grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Okay, next item.
Move approval of Vet Environmental Engineering Phase Two Regarding Thompson Site. Fund name, Edit Ban, Fund Number 4816, in an amount not to exceed $9,143.34.
Second. Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and we mentioned this at last week's work session, but I did not have the agreement. So this is for a vote and not for a ratification. This is an agreement to do a Phase Two environmental review on the area, both the Thompson site we own and the, and an area that, just off Strong Drive, that we would anticipate having to purchase to utilize what we do currently own. When they did the Phase One assessment, they
When they did the Phase One assessment, they found a few areas, mainly abandoned railroad bread, that needed additional review, and that's what this contract is for.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I think they were going to do a little bit of a deeper dive too into some of the CARST features and sinkholes, so, yeah, I appreciate that. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the VET Environmental Engineering Phase Two Project Regarding Thompson Site. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval to ratify VET Environmental Engineering Wetlands and Jurisdictional Water Delineation. Fund name edit ban, fund number 4816, in an amount not to exceed $11,577.51.
Second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and this is the one that has the CARST assessment in it. So that review is part of this, just over $4,000 part of this, as well as the wetlands and jurisdictional waters delineation. If you recall, I asked last week for it to be approved at the work session and ratified here because we needed them to begin work before the leaves have fallen. I can tell you in my yard that leaves have fallen, and so it was good that we got that done. Again, we did a similar wetlands and jurisdictional water delineation. We were looking at the Fortin site, and it was extremely helpful in understanding what was going on on that property. And so I discussed this with our consultants with the LZ, and they thought it would also be helpful when examining this property to have this information.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
I know that one of the emails I've gotten from people that live in that area indicate that close to the Thompson site, there are areas that flood when there's heavy rains. So I think this is important for protecting current property owners. Is there comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote to ratify the VET Environmental Engineering Wetlands and Jurisdictional Water Delineation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of Beam Longest NF Right-of-Way Services. Fund name Rockport Road Bridge Number 308, fund number 8166, in the amount of $42,100.
Second, and we have Ms. Ridge with us.
Good morning. This agreement is to continue the services for right-of-way acquisition on six parcels for the replacement of the Rockport Road Bridge. It's to be replaced in 2025 with a proposed letting date right now, November 2024.
Comments or questions?
Nope.
Seemed very straightforward but very technical for me. Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Beam Longest NF Right-of-Way Services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Next item.
Move approval of a declaration of a burn ban.
Second. Would you like to?
Okay. The local disaster emergency declaration for a burn ban has been declared beginning on November 13th, 2023, and will continue through...
November the 20th.
November 20th.
That's in anticipation, I think, of some rain on Friday. I think that the local newspaper did a good job of explaining in today's edition what all this covered, but we are dry, it's the fall, leaves are falling, and so this is a precaution to protect citizens and property in our area. Is there any public comment on this?
I don't think you seconded it.
Oh, did I not second it?
I don't think so.
Well, I seconded that. Sorry. Yes, thank you for keeping me on track here. Is there any public comment on this or any concerns? If not, I'll call for a vote on the declaration of a burn ban. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two to zero. Moving on, we have no appointments. Again, want to urge people to get involved with comments on the CDO. One of the discussions that I found most interesting is that, yes, while there is a reduction in the acreage for residential building, from what we are told, what's currently in the draft, and it is still draft, is approximately 3,000 of those acres are because it's in a floodplain. Remind people that we are doing a food drive at the Canopy of Lights the Friday after Thanksgiving. It starts at 6:45. Please bring canned good or your wallet and help out those that are still in need. As we've heard repeatedly from Hoosier Hills Food Bank and from people at Pantry 279 and other pantries, the need is up and donations are down, so anything that you can help with would be greatly appreciated. There continues to be COVID testing and COVID vaccines available, so please sign up or go in for your COVID test to pick it up for free. We encourage people to get involved with our boards and commissions. We'll be appointing new people early next year, and so if you're interested in being involved in county government, please go to www.co.munro.in.us and look at the different boards and commissions and get involved with us. We'd love to have additional folks join us. We do have blood drives coming up in December. The next one is Wednesday, December 13th, from 1:00 to 6:00, and Friday, December 15th, from 10:00 to 3:00. And finally, the Commissioners and the County Council have extended the assistance funds for county residents who need help with pay and utilities or rent. If you are in that position and are income qualified, please contact your township trustee. Every resident in Monroe County has a township trustee. That information is available on the county website and also contained within the minutes of the Commissionerial meetings. We will not be meeting next week. We're taking the Wednesday off in preparation for Thanksgiving. We will return on November 29th, and with that, wishing you all very happy Thanksgiving, and this meeting is adjourned, but we will be back for a work session. What, when should we come back? It's 10:39, should we return at 10:50? Does that work?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, everyone.